City Council meeting in the successor agency to the former Katati Community Redevelopment Agency. Today is Tuesday, May 28, 2019. And if we could have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Moore?
Here.
Councilmember Harvey?
Here.
Mayor Delastra?
Here.
Vice Mayor Skilman?
Here.
Councilmember Landman?
Here.
I'd also like to introduce other staff. You've just heard from our city council up here. But we also have tonight our city manager, Damian Obed, our city attorney, Robin Donahue. I said really slow Donahue because it's her last night. Our chief of police, Michael Parrish, our city engineer and director of public works, Craig Scott, our administrative services director, Angela Quarter, and our city clerk, Lauren Burgess. No other staff people, no. So with that, if you would rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you very much for that. We are now at item four on our agenda, which is approval of minutes and notice of waiving of reading of all resolutions and ordinances introduced and/or adopted under this agenda. And we have our regular meeting minutes from May 14.
Sumo?
Second.
A motion in two seconds. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Please show that's a five oh vote in favor of. And how quickly we got, we're taking a break? Wait a minute. This seems really odd, but here we are at item five. And we are here to certainly thank our city attorney for many years. And does the city manager, do you have some things to say? I'm sure you do.
I'll be brief because I know you all probably want to say something. But I just wanted to thank Robin for all her great advice over the years and your great sense of humor. And I really hope you enjoy your retirement, which is very well deserved.
Thank you.
Yeah. It's been a pleasure.
Great. All right. And let's bring this back to council. I'll start at this end with Councilmember Moore.
Robin, congratulations on your retirement. I think it's been fantastic working with you. Your patience and your determination and your thoroughness have been well appreciated. And we are going to miss you. But enjoy, enjoy your retirement, and I'm sure you'll miss our little circus here.
I will miss you too.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Harvey?
Yes, Robin. Thank you. Retirement, yeah. Well, just keep in mind that the days will go by fast and you'll wonder how you ever worked a full-time job and, and still were able to get the things done. The days go by quickly. Hope you have fun. Hope you travel. Hope you enjoy yourself. Really appreciate all that you've done. I know that called you a few times on different things, and if you didn't know the answer, you found that answer and got right back to me. Appreciate that. Thank you for being there for us when, when needed. And enjoy.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Landman?
Well, here we are. My goodness. So, you know, you meet a lot of interesting people you work with over the years. And I think the hallmark of things you're looking for when you're working with your attorney, obviously, you're looking for somebody that has a legal background to give you advice. That's a given. We want that for sure. I would like to think they have good common sense to give this, and you've always had that. But what you've always had, and what I think is the most important thing, is trust in your judgment. That's something that's rare. It's something that people can only earn, at least some. And you've always had that with us in spades. So I've always appreciated and enjoyed that working with you. And I know you'll enjoy your retirement. I know you won't be bored. I'm sure you will be coming down here regularly, the second and fourth, to sit in the audience. And perhaps you'll let us know what you think. That'll be interesting. But it would be always good to see you. And thank you for all the good years together.
All right. Thank you. Vice Mayor Skilman?
So I'll just echo what everybody else has to say. I've just really appreciated your guidance and counsel over the years, and it's really helped a lot, especially when I was new and trying to figure out all of the rules and things that we need to follow. And being able to go to seminars that you had led has just really been wonderful. And I hope you enjoy retirement, and I also hope you enjoy never having to bill your hours again. I empathize with that. All right. So anyway, thank you again. I really appreciate it.
And finally, the last word. It's always fun. Yeah, you've, you've certainly provided, you know, just an immense amount of service to us over the years. I believe I've gone through two mayoral cycles with you as city attorney. Sorry. But we've made it. This is the good news. Maybe that's why you're retiring before my term is up as mayor. I'm not sure. And your responsiveness, you know, again, somebody stated earlier that, you know, if you couldn't find the answer directly, that, you know, the staff at Myers-Navy was always very responsive to us. So you, you would have to move a lot of chess pieces and get us answers in a timely fashion. And you definitely did. So we thank you for that. And at this point, and welcome to the retirement club, by the way. At this point, I'd like to go ahead and turn the mic over to you if you have anything you'd like to say too, Robin.
Thank you all very much. I've been with Myers-Navy for the last 12 years, and I think almost seven, working pretty much either as the assistant city attorney or the city attorney for Katati. And I've enjoyed every minute of it, truly, every minute of it. You might not think that, but I have. It's been an honor and a privilege to work for all of you and with all of you and with the city of Katati, which I think is a great city. And now that I have a little bit more leisure time, I hope to see you all at an accordion festival or a kids' day or something where I can just come and have fun. I want to thank you all for your devotion to the city, for your collegiality, and for your always cooperation with me and willingness to hear me out. Really appreciate that. And I'm very excited to see the future development of Katati. I think there's some very good things on the drawing board. I think you have an excellent staff. I want to compliment Damian and the executive team as well. They are also a pleasure to work with. So I see nothing but goodness in your future, and I will miss all of you for sure. But I'm looking forward to this next chapter in my life. So thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you. We'll have a round of applause before we break. And because we've gone eight minutes now, I think we're going to have a refreshment break. So everybody's welcome. Thank you very much for regathering. We are now at item six, which is announcements. Meeting orientation for new attendees and viewers. In conformance with the Brown Act and the adopted city council rules, the meeting agenda includes items labeled as action items, where the city council will consider the item and citizens are afforded the opportunity to provide comments relevant to the item being discussed. The meeting agenda also includes a citizen's business item, which is the designated place on the agenda where citizens have the right to say whatever they wish. The city council may or may not choose to respond to comments as the government code allows. However, if the city council declines to respond, it should not be perceived as giving credence to or agreeing with any statements that the city council or its members believe are incorrect, misinformed, or purposefully biased. The city of Katati has special open office hours on Monday evenings from 5:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. by appointment in the community development department at City Hall as part of its Katati Open for Business program. This program provides personalized assistance and information to developers, current Katati business owners, and those interested in starting a new business within the city. The Rona Park Katati Regional Library hosts events for all ages, including art exhibits, book clubs, and children's programs. All events are free and open to the public. For more information, call the library at (584) 9121, or visit sonomalibrary.org. The Katati Historical Society Museum is open regularly the second Tuesday of each month from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m., Saturdays from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m., and by appointment. For more information, call (794) 0305. Citizens interested in receiving City of Katati community alerts via text or email are encouraged to sign up at nixel.com or by texting your zip code 94931 to 888-777. And finally, Measure G supports police services, a variety of recreation programs for all ages, and the maintenance of our streets, parks, and public buildings. See details on the web at katatiscity.org. And now we are at item seven, which is approval of the final agenda. Are there any changes?
Thank you, Mayor. There's no proposed changes.
All right. Very good. We are now at item eight, which is citizens' business and public comment for consent calendar items. Any member of the public wishing to speak to the council on any item listed on the consent calendar or any matter not listed on the agenda that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council may do so at this time. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the council is not allowed to consider issues or take action on any item not listed on the agenda during this period. Pursuant to City Council policy 2017-02, comments of any member of the public are normally restricted to a total of three minutes in length per person for matters not on the agenda and a total of three minutes per person in length for any and all items on the consent calendar. The mayor may extend the time limit for a reasonable time where a disability accommodation has been requested. And do we have anyone to speak on citizens' business? Ms. Alderman? Oh, we have some cards. Thank you. I'll find out. No, please, come on up. Thanks.
Hi. I'd like to once again call for an ethics charge against Mr. Moore for sending a degrading email and also the last meeting, I had the city council meeting, he got me off camera and he bullied me. And I'd like, for I like that. And I'd also like an ethics charge on Mark Lamon for doing undue influence under city council rule Q, I think it's Q. He's on Nextdoor.com, and he's influencing the public, the, the other commissioners and everything on the hotel. He's doing, this, he has a history of doing this, of doing city business on his personal email account. Ethics charges need to be filed for him. He personally shamed me on the city, on Nextdoor.com. He weaponized something from the fire district and the hotel district, and he shamed me. He totally tore me apart, and then people took his, his supporters, which were sending me vulgar, nasty comments because he wrote the email shaming me. That is enough. He needs to get some ethics. Okay, I'm done with that. I want to do consent calendar.
Sure. Please.
Okay. You want to cancel the meeting on July 9. July 9 is Tuesday. Fourth of July is Thursday. I asked Alexa, she told me it was a Thursday. There is no reason to follow, cancel the following Tuesday. If they're gonna, you're gonna have a holiday, you're gonna have Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday. And what you're doing by canceling and saying, we don't have nothing to, the city doesn't have any business. We have plenty of things to do in the beginning of the year. How about weed abatement? How about the homeless? How about all the things we bring up every time? Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak under citizens' business? All right, seen, oh, Mr. Berich, yes.
I thought you had some cards, Mayor.
I do.
Okay, thank you. All right. Good evening, council. For the benefit of the folks here in the room and their folks at home, my name is George Berich. I'm a former city councilman here. I've been attending these meetings here pretty religiously for about 20 years, yet I still can't get any of the council members to acknowledge me and recognize me by calling me Councilman Berich. But I digress. I'm one of the few people, citizens in Katati, who fought City Hall in federal court and won. We're a small club of people who have fought City Hall in litigation and won. I'm very proud of that. I also want to thank the mayor tonight for welcoming everybody to the meeting tonight. Very charming. That was not traditionally the case here in Katati for many decades as I came and watched these meetings. So it's nice to see someone actually welcoming the public and acknowledging them as taxpayers and as valuable commodity in town. And when I was on the city council, when it came time for me to speak, that was often forgot about, and I would take a quick opportunity to welcome people here and how happy I was to see people actually come out and be part of the process. I was chastised a little bit by my fellow city council members for trying to upstage him, but I tried to assure them that surely was not the case. There was a time here in City Hall where, for many years, we had a coffee percolator in the back of the room, which was utilized and put together by our city clerk, where we had some fresh coffee, sometimes some cookies and so forth to help keep people stay awake through the late night meetings and so forth. We haven't seen that in years. Since we've done away with that, I thought that that was a real lack of hospitality and charm that seems to be missing here in the room. I'd like to see that come back. I've asked many times, but evidently the city has money for other things, but not Also, I also would like to comment on the fact that Mr. Moore took the opportunity after the adjournment of the last council meeting to approach Ms. Alderman and bully her in private, off, off-camera. And it's very, very telling. And I've told the council in the past, I think it's very important if you have something to say to the public, that you should do it on camera, on the record, stand up as city leaders, take issue if you must. Ask a citizen to come back to the podium and address any concern that you may have, and not to chase people out of the room or to the back of the room after the meeting is over for your own political expediency. It stinks. I'd like to speak on consent calendar, Mayor, if I may?
Yeah, sure. Which item?
Okay.
Which item?
Pardon?
Which item?
The postponement of the July meeting. Over the years, it's been pretty traditional to cancel that particular meeting in July. And I too am concerned that I object to the fact that we're canceling a very, very valuable meeting because you have all mentioned things that you would like to see come before the city council for discussion. There are issues that you ran on in your campaigns, yet to this day you have not brought them up on the agenda for a future agenda item. You've been kicking those items down the road. And I think that you need a catch-up night like July 9 to make good on your promises that you want to have a discussion about what the city of Katati can do for the homeless in this town. What you're going to do to enforce the weed abatement laws that have been on the books here in Katati for decades. What you're going to do about partnering up with Rancho Adobe Fire District to see that we are, we are a fire-safe town and that we are going to avoid any fire dangers such as the high weeds and other fire dangers in town. This is, July 9 is a perfect opportunity for you to come in and brainstorm, think outside the box, look like city leaders, and offer the citizens to come forward with some ideas so that you can help our city go forward. Thank you.
And thank you very much. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on citizens' business? I thought out of the corner of my eye, I might have seen a hand over on this side of the room. Okay, maybe it was just my bad eyesight. So, nobody? Everybody's good? All right. Then I'll go ahead and close this session off, and we will now go to item.
Mayor Delastra, if I may?
Yes.
I'll hold the council for a moment just to comment on a couple of those comments.
Sure. Brief is good.
Thank you. There's an email sent July 7, 2018 to, let's see, talking about our city council agenda. And the agenda went on, the letter went on to say, and this was from Laurie Alderman. It says, "Brief comment. Most selfish and self-serving an agenda I've ever seen. It's direct result of power games you played last meeting to show that you have control of what happens." It goes on and on and on. So there were adjectives, there were adjectives that were in that email listing pompous, self-absorbed, boastful, selfish, adjective, affected, aloof, autocratic, boasting, bragging, conceited, egocentric, egotistical, egotistic, egonaiical, egotistical, haughty, individualistic, inflated, interdirected, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And there's another 15 descriptions that were there. My response to that email, and I did not call, was not unethical, but I said, "You forgot batshit crazy." So that is the response to that email, I wanted to say on there. I just want that clarified in the air, and then regarding any bullying.
I thought you were joining the teenagers in court.
There was a response to an email taken out of context posted on the media board. So at the end of the meeting, I went over and pulled that comment, pulled that comment, and if that is determined to be bullying, then I don't understand that.
All right.
I just want to clarify on that. Thank you very much.
Okay. And we're going to move on now to item nine, which is the consent calendar.
And I'd like to approve.
Two items on the consent calendar that.
Second.
Motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none? All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Please show a five oh vote in favor to support both consent items, consent calendar items. And we're now at item 10, which is direction on future agenda items. I'm going to start with one, just since the microphone's on in front of me. So we were given some information up here before the meeting started related to climate emergency resolution. And I, I know we did something last year that was, I don't know if it's the exact same thing, but something similar, anyway. So it looks like we have a request to bring that forward to a future agenda item. So I'd like to suggest that, and I see some thumbs up and nods that we're fine with that. Okay. So we will bring that to a future agenda item. Thank you. And is there anything else for future agenda items? Councilmember Harvey?
Along with that, there were some other zero waste things that kind of went along with all that. So if it could come together in the proper order, I think that that would be appropriate. And I know that Sebastopol has passed some of them and made some good additions to that, so we can do that. And then I do have one item that we will need to bring forward, and that's that in our June meeting, there will be looking at on the groundwater management, they will be looking at approving the fees for that. And the last time we spoke about this, we were looking at different ways to fund for the next three years. So I would like that brought back so that I can appropriately vote at our, I believe it's June 14 meeting, 13th, 13th meeting, 13, 14. Anyway, so I would like to get input and direction from the council before I commit any.
So it looks like we have a June 11 council meeting, so two nights before.
Yeah. Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Moore, anything for future agenda?
Not time.
Nope. Vice Mayor?
No, thank you.
Councilmember? All right. And I have more fan mail coming in. This is great.
Boy, you're so popular.
Oh, that's amazing. All right. We will now go to item 11, which is our regular agenda, and we'll start with item A, which is a proposed letter of concern for new gas station at 7180 Grabenstein Highway. And I'll turn that over to the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So in the packet is a draft letter, and the proposed action is to authorize the mayor to execute, to sign the letter and send it to supervisor for the district, Supervisor Rabbit. I also want to point out, before I just briefly go over it, that there is a, there's a couple proposed edits to the letter that's in the packet. It's on the dais as well as the public table in the back. And the edits are primarily around the community separator. There was a comment received about the community separator, where that is and where it isn't. And I was able to find a better map, better map from the county general plan that more clearly outlined where the boundaries were. And it turns out that the, the subject project is actually not in the community separator, but adjacent to it, immediately adjacent to it. So that's what the, that's primarily what the edits reflect, as well as the fact that the proposed project, and it's no secret, the proposed project's a gas station, by the way, and it also would include a convenience store and a car wash. This is at the corner of Stony Point and Highway 116. It's where the, like, you know, Kind Clothing, there's a little market there now, there's a couple, it's a commercial center now. And we've received quite a bit of public concern about the project. The city has previously commented on some of the technical aspects of the project, specifically the traffic impacts and the fact that it's outside our UGB. So in terms of water and sewer, the city cannot serve that property, legally cannot serve that property. And the, the citizen comments that we've received are primarily around concern about the intensification of land use. It's a neat, like, as I mentioned earlier, it's an existing commercial center, although this would go, this would turn that into, it would expand the physical footprint of the project as it exists today and turn it into a 24-hours, 24-hour-a-day operation. Typical gas station, very, very well lit with the typical gas station-type traffic that you'd expect and potential impacts. So with that, I will just give it to you if you have any questions about the, about the project that maybe I can help answer, but otherwise, that's kind of it in a nutshell.
Have you discussed with the county any kind of a timeline on this? I, I can't remember reading about the timeline.
So this, the routing originally was routed out by the county in 2018, so last year, for comments. And I don't know, I placed a call with the county to find out its current status. I haven't gotten a call back yet, so I don't know.
Okay. And kind of the reason I'm asking that too is tonight, you know, we're looking for some additional guidance, which the city manager has already made some edits to his earlier letter. But I don't know, I mean, what I'd like to say is it'd be great to get some very specific direction from council and from the public on some word changes. I think we have some limits in what we can and cannot say. It is out of our jurisdiction at some level. But to at least make the supervisor aware of what some of the concerns are, but what I'd rather not have is to have to wait for our next meeting to bring this back. I'd like that kind of direction, that staff and myself can edit this letter and send it out this week. That'd be my goal. So I just wanted, that's why I was asking that question on, on timing. I knew it's not, there's not groundbreaking happening this week. I got that part. I figured that one out, so. Okay, with that, are there any questions for staff? Councilmember Landman?
Yeah, I think I know what I wanted to ask. So I hear your confusion sometime, look, trying to pull up different maps. They are all slightly different. Some of the people I talked to expressed the same concern. What did seem to be clear, at least, some of them indicated, though, if this is not exactly in a community separator, it seems sandwiched right between two areas that are. Would that add any, that sounds to me, at least, like it adds a little extra concern to this, along with it being in the rural scenic corridor. Would that be worth including?
Well, I think, you know, at least with respect to the UGB that the Katati voters extended, it's clear that it's in the, what I would call the green belt outside of the city of Katati's UGB, urban growth boundary.
If there's not extra value in it, then I don't need to add the extra verbiage because I know they'll start to skim it if we do that. I just wanted to check and see, because I remember when I read that, I thought that added a small amount of emphasis to the argument.
Yes, the community separator is something very specific in their general plan, and so that terminology wouldn't be, would not be appropriate for the, because it's tied to policies and implementing measures.
I think the case here is very strong, so there's no need to overstate it. I just wanted to ask. So good. Thank you.
All right. Vice Mayor Skilman?
No, no.
Any questions for staff? Councilmember Harvey? I see the hand.
Yeah. So in the background, it says that a gas station, car wash, convenience store have been proposed. I happen to have a. I happen to have a meeting in Santa Rosa, and I drove back by that way today. And I noticed that there's a "for sale" sign there, so I guess that left me a little bit more confused, since this implies that it's already been sold and a proposal is in the works. And when I drove by, it looks like the property's just been put up for sale. So do you have any insight into any of that?
It's, it isn't, I mean, they're not exclusively, they're not mutually exclusive from each other. Sometimes they will be selling the property while they're processing. They might have, like, a property purchase agreement, but not a sale yet, as they're processing the development application. So it's hard to say.
Okay.
As far as I know, they're still processing the development application.
So it's not something where they put out requests for proposals for a gas station and just waiting for people to buy the property and put that in? It's not something like that, is it?
No, I don't think so.
So someone could actually buy it and do whatever with it, right?
Yeah, whatever's allowed by the zoning, yeah.
Okay. And is a gas station allowed within their zoning for that property?
It appears that it would be with a use permit.
Okay.
Not by right, but...
Not by right, but by use. Okay. Okay. So I'm not, you know, I don't have anything other, it just confused me a little bit because the two pieces didn't, didn't seem to go together for me, but that's how my questions are.
All right. Great. Thank you. Councilmember Moore?
No, I think the letter articulates it well without being overly verbose, so that it's actually read.
Okay.
And that'd be good.
All right. So with that, I'm going to go out now for a public comment. I know I have several speaker cards here, so I'm just going to do them in the order that I receive them. So I'd like to go ahead and open the public comment and start with Woody Hastings.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Woody Hastings. I'm a resident of unincorporated Sonoma County, and I was very...
...which is just off of 116. I have several neighbors who would have been here tonight, but they had the conflict. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Appreciate that. And Loriann Barber?
Hi, Loriann, resident of Kattati. And I am also here, I kind of want to just ditto Deborah and Woody, because I'm really just wanting to appreciate the council taking the time and the energy to send a letter. In regards to this, my points are very similar. I just think that the, so I'm against having a gas station there. I think it's the wrong thing at this time and the wrong place for that to happen. I think, you know, it could be potentially negative for Kattati in terms of the reduced revenue. I'm concerned about the watershed, and I think we're all know that we need to be moving towards vehicle electrification and not continuing fossil fuels. So I don't necessarily have anything new to add, but I just, I guess my point would be that please make the letter as strong as you feel you possibly can, because it's hard to know where to impact this project from, you know, what we've heard about where it might go. So I appreciate your doing that, and you have my support, so thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. And Kate Simons?
Thank you for the opportunity to comment on this, and I also really appreciate that the city of Kattati is proposing to send this letter. I've been following this proposed project for a few months now, and it's making its way through the design review board with the county, and I attended that hearing. And the committee there sent the project back, basically start over on multiple, multiple points. They really didn't like the lack of rural character that this, that this project showed. The awning intruded into the scenic corridor. It just had a, they just, even though the purview of that particular, the design review board is just aesthetics and architectural details, they just sent the whole project back. So it gave some breathing room. So I oppose the project on multiple environmental issues and land use planning issues that have been talked about. But one of the, the aspects of the project, what I think should be a concern of city Kattati, is that Arco tends to have lower gas prices than other gas stations, and we have at least around four gas stations on the 116, 101 corridor, and a couple of them have car washes, and they all have little convenience stores. So potentially, I mean, I'll say, as a 13-year resident here in Kattati, I've never seen a backup at these gas stations, that there's such a demand for, you know, gas and, and car washes, that we actually need this business. So I really think that this, that if Arco comes in, they're going to be sucking away business from Kattati gas stations. And that's not good for Kattati, because those businesses, even though they're dirty energy, I would rather see cleaner energy, but still, they, they help create some economic vitality here in town. And Kattati has a hard time keeping businesses. You know, we have a lot of shuttered businesses, empty vacant commercial space, and so we, we really don't need more businesses, more money siphoned off outside of the town. So, and which in turn means lower tax revenues for the city, which means in turn, then the city now has to find other, other sources to keep the revenues up. So I think that we all have a vested interest in seeing this gas station not happen. So I just recommend that you consider those kinds of impacts in your letter, and I really think that gives the Kattati greater standing with the county in terms of opposing this project. And just lastly, I would love to see that if the city is able to basically include in its letter an opposition to the project, that would be, that would be sweet. That'd be very nice. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. That is the cherry on top of the pie, isn't it, that saying no? Ms. Alderman? I am out of speaker cards, by the way, so yes, please.
I have no opinion on the gas station. I do take issue with how this came to be. Mark Landman was on Nextdoor.com, saw a thing about 116 and the gas station, and he asked last meeting for it to be, a letter be drawn, and it to be, and then it came to council. He, a few days ago, he independently put it on, put the whole draft letter on Nextdoor.com and promoted it. This is, this is the kind of things he does. He did undue influence, again. He used a personal status as a neighbor to do city business and get this agenda item on. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Beric.
The city manager in his report said that there were many comments or comment letters on file on this project. I go to the back of the room, I see there's two letters. He received two letters in print in the back of the room, so I don't know about all these comments that you're getting. Now, if there are emails that came into the city regarding this project, they should have been printed out and put in the back of the room as well. So if you're going to start claiming a lot of comments, the public, the taxpayers would like to read them. A gas station at this, at this location is in complete character with our community. Just look around. Anybody drive their bike to City Hall tonight? The city council did not campaign against the casino. The city council did not campaign against big box stores. Were they in character with our rural community? Highway 116 corridor is earmarked for commercial all the way down out to Stony Point. How is a gas station out there not going to be in character with all the development? The retail development next to Lowe's, Lowe's the anchor tenant, as the city council proposed it was going to be. How'd that anchor work out for us, Kattati? A gas station that makes money in a country that has enough fossil fuels for the next 100 to 200 years, a country that is the leading producer of oil and natural gas on the planet, a major exporter of oil. So a gas station is not in character with our community? Is that what we're hearing? How ridiculous is that? And for all these electric cars, where are they fueled on? Coal. Dirty coal. Electrical plants charging your cars from electrical facilities burning coal. How clean is that?
All right. Thank you. Any idea what that background sound is? No, we'll just enjoy it. Okay. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on this issue? All right. Seeing no one, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Just to address a couple of the points that were brought up, you know, a gas station, for instance, it's just a gas station. Well, it is just a gas station, proposed. It's a 16-pump gas station. So that would be significantly larger than certainly anything we have in Kattati. The part that kind of doesn't sit too well with me is that, first of all, I don't know. I think, I think "need" is a, is a question. You know, is that such a major thoroughfare? And I, it is east-west, I get it, but is it such a major thoroughfare that that's the place for a 16-pump gas station? That wouldn't be the first place that would come to my mind to put one of these. And, you know, it can easily make a significant amount of money, and Mr. Beric pointed that out, that's a good point, none of which is in Kattati's tax base, however, since that's outside the city. So that doesn't sit too well with me. But before we get too deep into this, I'm going to go around council, I'll start at this end for now, and we'll go with Councilmember Moore. And any additional comments?
No, I think it's really completely out of character for that particular area. At some point down the road, we will be hopefully developing that 116 commercial corridor, but I don't think we're going to have back-to-back, back-to-back, back gas stations and car washes. So it would be a much different character in that regard, and it will probably be something more in the next year. I don't think it's something that's an appropriate fit for that particular location, and I don't think it fits in with our goals of reducing greenhouse gas emissions and being more climate-friendly.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate that. Councilmember Harvey?
Um, yeah, it does seem a little bit odd. It just is an odd use there. Like I said, I drove up and down Stony Point today because I came the back way, and it just doesn't seem to fit there. I do like, if we are going to ultimately give you leeway to fine-tune this letter, if there's a way to work in the financial impacts to Kattati, I think that that would be a good add, because it will, you know, drain some amount, I don't know how you quantify that. The other thing that I think, even though the letter is suggested to be written to David Rabbit, I think that it would be worthwhile to copy all the supervisors. I don't know that they would necessarily share it, but I think that this is broad enough that I think that we should share, you know, share it with all the supervisors. But I'm, I'm in support of us sending this letter. Not sure, you know, what influence we actually...
Excellent fix.
Actually can have, but now we lost our microphones, but... Oh, it'll come down. But, all right, but I support, I support it, but anyways, giving you, giving you the leeway to fine-tune it as needed.
All right. Sorry, didn't mean to do that.
Just broke them again.
I just woke it up. All right. Councilmember Landman, any comments?
Oh, yeah, a few here. Okay. First of all, very briefly, in response to a comment, yes, I did share this draft letter with the community after the packet was posted, to people who were interested and had questions and wanted feedback on this. So I don't see a problem with that, and we'll continue to do things like that, because I kind of look at it like... kind of look at it like my job. So with that, looking back at this, it's interesting. Hope that's not my timer. We kind of have an agreement, this agreement with the county and the voters and the cities, that in essence, we as cities agree we'll stop expanding out into county space, taking up your areas, putting goods and services there, constantly expanding. If you don't build right up to our borders and compete with our goods and services, and if we can agree to that mutual detente, then the benefit we get is this beautiful green area in the middle, which everybody, pretty much everybody wants to preserve. That was kind of the goal here. That was the outcome. And it was pretty well supported because I think we had, what, about almost 80% or over 80% of the voters support this just a few years ago. So that's why I think this is problematic. It really seems far outside that general agreement that everybody agreed to. I mean, if this is just a sprawl-inducing intensification of services, and there's really needless duplication of services we already have here. You're going to force numerous small local businesses out through this. And finally, something nobody's mentioned, this is besides being a rather large gas station, it's a car wash. And it's a car wash that's in a place that has no water or sewer. It's going to work completely on well and septic system. That doesn't make a lot of sense. That doesn't seem like it fits there, so I would agree with that. So I do agree, I would like to see the letter stronger. I would support anything the mayor can do to make that in his judgment. I will say, though, as a caveat to everybody who asked for that, this isn't our jurisdiction, and there's a way of presenting this. If we go in and just say we're against it, that probably isn't going to win any great favor, perhaps with Supervisor Rabbit. So we're trying to be as polite and respective that this is his domain and not ours. Having said that, you're certainly not bound by that. And that's the last thing I wanted to say tonight. We've done the best we can to help with this because we heard you, and it is something that attention should be given to. But now it's time for your voices. You can write Supervisor Rabbit, he's the chair, write all the supervisors. Also, I believe Mr. Hastings or somebody had a list of the next steps where this is going, the process, write every single one of those commissions. And not just an email. It really shocks them and it gets dropped writing their desks in the 21st century if somebody actually prints and sends a letter through the mail. Even better, a fax. I guarantee people notice this. So I would encourage for you to do that and to tell your neighbors and friends that you mentioned, because I think that will help even more than any small effort we can make. So with that, I support the mayor and anything you can do to add just a little more edge to that that you think is reasonable, I would be supportive of.
All right. Thank you. I will not send a fax because I haven't used one in years, so just wanted to point that out. All right. Vice Mayor Skilman, any comments?
Actually, the majority of what I was going to comment has been said, but I really appreciate, though, that, that there was that flexibility, that the letter was drafted, we got input from people sending emails and letters to us, and that we were able to modify it and that there's still a chance to incorporate some of what's been said tonight. So I do appreciate that there's that give-and-take process. So I appreciate that from our city manager. So thank you. Wanted to acknowledge that. And it seems to have incorporated a lot of the concerns that were expressed. And, and again, it is a frustrating situation because we don't get to say, if you pass this, we will vote against it. But at least we can express that we are not supportive of that type of development in that area, even though we don't have jurisdiction for it. So I would support the letter as well and appreciate also the idea of talking about the financial impacts for the city because I think that makes it more personalized. And I really wish the feedback was top. Okay. Thank you.
That's right. Yeah. It's the sound of the sea. You know, and I just think it's worth reemphasizing that the wording of this letter, we are kind of walking a fine line. So that's a political response, clearly. And, but I think that's the world we live in. So, you know, in lieu of an outright opposition to this project, I think there are some more subtle ways that we can oppose this project, but state it maybe in a more positive way, if that makes any sense. And I think, you know, we're just, we're going to have to walk that fine line. The city manager did add some additional information on the letter that we have on the dais, which I believe you said was also in the back of the room. I have a couple of additional ideas, so I will get with you in the next day or so, and we'll clean this up. I mean, I've heard loud and clear from everybody, you know, how people feel about it and what's right or wrong with it. And, you know, it's not to say that there aren't positives with it, but I think from the city's standpoint, honestly, the biggest negative is the loss of the taxes that we would get from the gas taxes. And I don't know, it seems like it wasn't too long ago, I don't know if it's still the case, that that was sort of our largest tax generator in the city were the gas stations. Is that still the case, or they're probably in the top three or four?
They're not the largest, but as a group, they make up about a quarter sales tax.
Yeah. And that's a significant amount of money. So if we lose that, then we're struggling trying to find those funds and make up that deficit. So with that, thank you all for your comments. I do appreciate them. There's several people who did send letters and emails who are not here this evening. And like I said, we will incorporate some more of those thoughts, although my goal is probably to get this thing out this week. So I'm not, you know, I'm going to put time into it, but I can do it relatively quickly. And I'll get with you on that, too. Yes, please.
So Damian, if there's any way you and the mayor can work it in, point is well taken on the water and septic. And I think pointing out the fact that we right now are in the JPA looking at the groundwater, this is certainly, you know, a large impact, having, having something like a car wash that will pull directly from our groundwater is, is worth noting as we're trying to lessen those needs.
And as the agenda reads, by the way, I do need a motion and second and a vote to forward all of these recommendations.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like, I'd be happy to make a motion, but first I just wanted to suggest some verbiage that you may or may not use.
Sure.
It just occurred to me, we're sitting here, because it appears to be, most of our citizens and people in the area seem to be opposed to this. Of course, we don't want to say that in a letter, but what we could say, the great majority of our citizens appear to be in opposition and we're supportive of their Just wanted to put that out there.
I'm nodding because I'm writing, but yes.
Okay. And with that, I'd like to, let's see, we need to have a motion, give you direction. Excuse me. I've already moved.
Would you like me to make a motion? I can jump in.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. Give you a motion authorizing you to execute this letter of concern of the gas station at 116 in Grabenstein.
Second.
All right. Motion second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? Please show a 5-0 vote in favor to have me strategically craft a stronger letter with the city manager. How's that for direction? All right. Thank you all for your input on this.
So Mayor, do you mind if we just pause for a second while I just, we play with the sound system?
Sure. For the audience is that background sound?
Very.
Okay. Well, that's great. But we can't get...
We're totally annoyed.
It's, it's either no microphones and no background sound, or microphones and background. Yeah. So, I mean, can you hear me? I mean, it's a little annoying, but we're going to try to get through it. Okay. I'll talk fast. We are now under regular agenda, item B, which is nominations for regional commissions and committees on behalf of Sonoma County Mayors and Councilmembers Association and City Selection Committee. And I will turn that over to the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So oddly enough, this year seems to be an ongoing rolling committee appointments, which I was talking to Lauren about today. I don't recall it ever being continuous through the year like, like it has been so far. But anyway, be it as it may, we have a mayors and councilmembers meeting coming up in June. And so before that, there are four positions that are up for reappointment. And two of them are ABAG, you have the ABAG Executive Board position and alternate, as well as the Sonoma County AG and Open Space Citizen Advisory Committee position. And we've, for the ABAG positions, we haven't received any letters of interest. For the Sonoma AG and Open Space, there is somebody that we know that applied for that one. And then we also have the ABAG Regional Planning Committee, one position. And we have a letter of interest from Councilmember Susan Adams for Warner Park for that one. And spoiler alert, the person that we know that applied for the AG and Open Space is Mayor John Delawso.
Yes.
With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right. Thank you very much for that brief report. Any questions from councilmembers?
Just a comment. It may have been continuous letters, it seems like this year, but at least it's gone smoothly so far.
Oh, yeah.
That's the good news.
Yeah. That's, that's really funny in a strange way. All right. We'll go ahead and open this up for public comment. Anybody care to say I shouldn't run for AG and Open Space? Or that I should run? Either way, okay. We'll close the public comment. All right. So kind of simple, on the ABAG Executive Board and the alternate position, nobody's applied for those. And so we have two people who have applied for two different positions. You've heard them in the staff report, and I'm just looking for direction.
Mr. Mayor, if I might suggest, I give you directions. Support Susan Adams, as well of who this Delawso fellow is, him as well. And actually, seriously, both those positions, as well as give you full discretion, just in case somebody does put their name forward, if you believe it's a, someone who can do a good job and would be supportive, I would personally like to see you have the flexibility to do that at the meeting. We've learned this year, that seems to be the smart way to go.
And are you speaking of any of the four positions, or specifically the two ABAGs with nobody?
Just, just the two ABAGs. I was thinking, yes.
All right. No, that's fine. That's fine. Thank you. So that sounded like a motion.
Okay.
Don't really need a motion, but it sounded good. I know, I just said it sounded like a motion. That's all I said.
Give it to the phones up.
Okay. So any...
I would concur.
Councilmember Harvey?
Yes.
I think I do. Vice Mayor?
Me.
All right. I have my orders as so specified. Thank you very much. And now we are at...
I won't run amok.
I will not run amok because that sounds too far. We're now at item C, which is the 2018 Annual Housing Report to the California Department of Housing and Community Development. And I'll turn that over to the city manager again.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So get ready to wade into alphabet soup here for a minute. So a little bit of background. We have, we have, we're going to talk about HCD and COGS and MPOs and MTC and ABAG and sorts of great stuff. And RENA. I forgot RENA. Yeah, I forgot RENA. Sorry. So attached to the staff report are a couple of attachments. One is a table out of the annual housing report that's submitted to HCD, otherwise lovingly known as California Department of Housing and Community Development. So this is just one of many tables that is, that are submitted annually. But this is just a very representative table, I think, is a really good overview snapshot of housing production. And then attached, the second attachment is something HCD also puts out annually, which is titled State Income Limits. And they do this each year, right? So by county, if you look at that letter, you see area median incomes, and then it has by income category, from extremely low up to moderate. And on the vertical axis and on the horizontal axis, number of persons per household. So it's a kind of a adjusting scale based on what category, so when we're talking about the affordable housing context, what category of affordable housing you are trying to qualify people for, and how many people are in that household. And that sets the, sets the limits there. Okay. So just as way of background, every city in the, in the state develops a general plan. General plan is made up of many elements. One of the elements is the housing element. The housing element is sort of a special element of the general plan because when the city comes up with a housing element, it has to get HCD to review and approve it before the local jurisdiction can approve it and incorporate it as part of the general So the, when you look at the review cycles for, for these housing elements, they, in state statute, it's either five years or eight years. Originally, it was every five years that they were supposed to be updated. They changed it, though, to be every eight years with the advent of the housing-transportation connection that was made several years ago to try to generate, like we've been talking about earlier this evening, more infill development. So development is more compact, more, more centered, more city-centered around jobs, services, and not sprawled. So this came, this came out of state legislation around greenhouse gas reductions, EB32 and so forth. So that's when the transportation-housing nexus really kind of became part of law. And then they created this eight-year cycle because that's the transportation cycle that transportation projects regionally are planned on. So now the housing plans are in eight-year cycles rather than five-year cycles, although five years is still technically a possibility. And so how this all comes to be is HCD will, they will look at demographic information from the California Department of Finance, and they have a formula they use to calculate housing needs in every region. Or what's otherwise known as a COG, it's a Council of Governments. So in the Bay Area, the Council of Governments is referred to as ABAG, the Association of Bay Area Governments. Every region of California has a different COG with a different name, but for us, it's ABAG. So ABAG then takes this information from the Department of Finance, and they try to fit it to the region. And there's back and forth, and then they agree on what that number should be. And then it's final for the region. And then ABAG will then take that sort of aggregate number of, of market rate housing and housing by affordability level and apply it to cities and counties. And they use their own, you know, magic formulas to come up with that, what they call regional housing needs allocation, RENA numbers. And, and they, they put it all together in what's called a regional housing needs allocation plan, a RENA plan. And then until 2018, all, all cities, all California cities submitted annually these production reports to, to HCD. And they're due by annual, by April 1st every year. That's been kind of law for a while, where, you know, the COG, ABAG in our case, creates the RENA plan, and then all the cities during this fiver, now eight-year cycle, would report back every year as to what kind of production they're getting in all different income categories. In 2018, there were some changes in state law. This is around, of course, the housing crisis, particularly in the coastal areas of California. And one of the changes in law was that, was that in addition to the production numbers, each jurisdiction then has to also submit all the numbers all the development applications receives, and what was approved or not approved. And really what they're trying to get to is they're trying to look for, I guess in theory, HCD is trying, the legislature is trying to give HCD the authority to look for bad actors. Cities that get application, planning, like, you know, housing applications in but don't approve them and are in the way of housing production. So they asked, they asked for this additional granularity on the housing reports. And it's in the staff report, but it basically, it's looking for, it's looking for all sorts of impediments at the local level to housing production, and looking for people that, people like cities or counties that stand out as blocking housing production for whatever reason. I, I know recently there was a very well-publicized case with some new authority that HCD had down in Southern California, where this, where HCD referred to the state attorney general, one of the cities down there, for enforcement, because HCD was viewing them as a, as creating barriers to housing production. And so that's sort of the new world that we live in, where these things can get referred by HCD to the state attorney general, where they, they could then enforce on the local jurisdictions, essentially sue them. And then I guess the latest thing is, as of June 30th of this year, HCD is supposed to finish a study to... to finish a study to evaluate, evaluate the reasonableness of local fees charged to new developments. And this is all mitigation fee act stuff. I don't know, I, I think it's unclear what they're going to do with it, but it's a report to the legislature, and presumably the legislature will take this report and maybe turn it into some sort of legislation limiting impact fees for development. This has yet to be determined, but it looks like that's where it's going. So the current eight-year RENA cycle runs from 2015 to 2023. And like I mentioned earlier, this is how HCD assesses the jurisdiction's progress in meeting its numbers for that cycle. And you can see in the table on packet page 38, these are the categories, very low, low, moderate, and above moderate, so market rate essentially. Allocation, in that first column, RENA allocation, 137 is our total allocation for this eight-year cycle. The next column to the right is all the units produced to date. And then the last column is the remaining numbers by income level. And these are actually, so these are all, and this, this only reflects actually built projects, not, not like entitled projects. So in other words, Kessin Ranch's affordable units are not counted in here yet because they haven't been actually physically produced. Same with the Santero Apartments, which are two entitled projects that aren't factored in at this point. So the city now has affordable housing requirements, and I think, I mean, we're all pretty well familiar with it, that if you have a, a development, 10 units or more, that they need to set aside 15% of their units as affordable, and it's a third, a third, a third in terms of very low, low, and, and moderate. And if they're less than 10 units, they can, what they call fee out, so they can pay an affordable housing fee. So like our inclusionary housing fund, the monies in that fund are from small developments, less than 10 units, that essentially just paid a fee. And the theory there is that they're too small to financially absorb the cost of building their own units, affordable units within such a small development. But in larger developments, they have more capacity to spread that cost out and absorb it into the development. And if you're wondering what affordability means, we, so we just use the HCD definition of affordability. Very low means it's 50% or less of the area median income. Low is greater than 50%, up to 80%, and then moderate is above 80%, all the way up to 120%. And then anything that's market rate is over 120% of the AMI. And just, I guess, just to conclude, I'll just say, I mentioned Kessin and the Santero. Kessin as entitled would add 40 market rate houses, two very low, two low, and three moderate, so seven affordable total. Santero as currently entitled would add 35 market rate apartments, five very low, three low-income, and six moderate, for seven total. And if these two projects are built as entitled, we would, we would meet or exceed all of our RENA numbers, except for in the very low category, where we'd still have 24 units left after Santero and Kessin, if they were built as entitled. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right. Thank you very much for that. Can I ask a question? I don't know if my other colleagues have the same question, but, you know, with the loss of redevelopment funds, that was the use of that money was for building low-income housing, not entirely the use of those funds. So, and, you know, I know there's been some bills back and forth over the last several years. I'm not sure, turn to our Ledge Committee rep, I'm not sure if there's anything in the docket right now that's looking at possible bringing back some version.
Lots of noise about things basically tied to pushing for housing somewhat as we saw this year, but as a pseudo, nobody wants to speak the name redevelopment, but something akin to that which can't be named. So nothing that I know of that's seriously materialized yet, though.
It just seems like, you know, if the state is really somewhat serious about this, and they should be, just like jurisdictions should be, you know, why don't they give, let's call it the son of redevelopment, so we won't call it redevelopment, call it the son of redevelopment, and bring back, or at least, I don't want to say reimburse cities, because that makes no sense, but to give money to cities based on meeting certain goals of low-income housing that they develop. And, you know, you can't do that on an annual cycle, because I don't know that anybody can build homes that quick and get them sold and so on and so forth, but maybe it's a two-year cycle, you know, just for some kind of a carrot out there that could help jurisdictions further these numbers along. And it still gives us, jurisdictions, the ability to make those planning decisions and those, which is where those decisions should be made and not in Sacramento for Cotati or Sebastopol or Mendocino County or anywhere else. So I, I guess, okay, so I'm preaching to the choir, and nobody's going to say anything, except not, that's fine. I just had to say that because I think that kind of makes some sense, and, you know, just, it would be great if somebody in Sacramento, some legislators, think about that. But, yeah, any questions or comments? Councilmember Harvey?
Well, the reality is that it's not like in the very low and low and all that, you're allowed to build a different structure. The structures are to be the same, you are just selling them for less. That's going to be a problem unless there is something to offset that difference. And it's interesting, you know, that you talk about looking to look at the fees. Even if you were to reduce your fees, and some cities have done a lot of that, the cost of the property and the cost of the building of the unit is expensive. And, and there's no way that, you know, and the developers use this term all the time, pencil out, if it costs you, and I'll just make up numbers, if it costs you $500 to build it, and you can only charge $100,000 for it, there is a loss of $400,000 that has to come from somewhere. It's not like out of the goodness of their hearts, developers are going to say, oh, well, don't worry, you know, we'll just sell it for that. That's just not the way, that's not the way it works. So I, I get that part, but without figuring out a way, be it son of redevelopment or, or something, the cost is the cost, and you have to, if you're going to sell it for less, you have to figure out how to, to make up that difference. The other question that I had on this is why, why is our very low number so high? You know, we talk about a third, a third, a third, but it seems like our very low number is twice as big as the low and moderate, so it doesn't really feel like a third, a third, a third. It just feels like a whole number, you know, that hole gets bigger because if you think of the very low, you know, you're talking about a difference of $400,000. You know, you talk about the low, you may be 300, and then the moderate, you may be 200, you know, it gets worse as the hole gets deeper. And it just seems that that number is something we'll never, without a funding source somewhere, how would we ever encourage people to build more of those? Money doesn't come from nowhere.
So the, the third, the third, the third is just how we split up our 15% inclusionary? This is just out of the magical number machine from A-BAG. Yeah, I, I don't.
So we just magically got 35? Was it a magical number that somebody decided we need?
I think probably regionally, there was a high level of very low that was needed, and everyone got their share of it, and that wasn't having to be our share of it. I don't think, I would suspect that everyone probably got large shares of very low, but it is the hardest to get to because it's the most deeply underwater or subsidized to, to make it actually revenue neutral for a, builders are, builders are for-profit entities. They don't do it just to, just for the social benefit of it. I mean, they do it to make money, right? So, which is fine, I mean, that's just how it works, but they need to, it needs to pencil, as you said. And a lot of the state legislation so far is, is a stick that's painted orange, and they call it a carrot, you know?
It, it didn't feel like a carrot.
Right. It doesn't feel like a carrot.
It felt like a stick.
Yeah. So, I mean, the comments are, I think, absolutely right, where, you know, it needs to be, there needs to be a funding source to create, whether it's a tax incentive or a new funding source or something, has to be in place to make it work for the private developer to actually produce these housing units. And then from the city side, it, it needs to, we need to be able to continue to provide services to these new units, as well as the infrastructure that's needed to support these units. And unfortunately, like, as the council, the council's letter on CASA, you know, that went to the state legislature, it was, CASA as initially, as was initially sort of dreamt up, was all about just producing housing, you know, housing, housing, housing right now, and, you know, kind of forget about the infrastructure impacts, the service impacts, how it's going to, you know, where's this money coming from? And so hopefully, hopefully with the back and forth, the discussions that are happening, you know, Ledge Committees across the state and at the state legislature, hopefully they're taking the time to think about it in a more balanced way, that, you know, producing housing units is great, but you need to come up with the funding to support it.
Yes, because as you said, it's not like developers are going to do it this out of the kindness of their heart. They are a developer to make money, not to lose money. That's duh.
That was, thank you. That was very witty, that last comment. Are you done?
Yeah.
For now. Councilmember Lamond, I know you had your hand up as well.
Yeah, no, I think this is an interesting discussion. You can see even with just a very short dive into this, it really indicates we kind of have a failed process here statewide, despite good intentions and true needs. Just looking at how these numbers come up, if they're regularly referred to as magic numbers, and there's no true rhyme or reason to how they're assigned, that's a huge problem right there. I mean, it really makes you question the validity of how it's done, or even if there's truly something that's attainable. And that's the whole point of setting targets, you really want to try and pick an attainable one, hopefully, not just always aspirational. And then, of course, the missing funding mechanism, even more than that. I mean, my initial, original question was going to be, so we're better than halfway through our RENA process right now, and it looks like we're about half, we'll meet about all of our numbers, it looks like, with the entitled projects come aligned, we'll either meet or exceed those, with the exception of very low. And my question was, I'm guessing, obviously, that has to be market forces, because that's just the one that's a bridge too far, easily bring together, and I wanted to check, I guess that's true for most communities. So I was going to ask you that. And I also wanted to ask, in light of this discussion, how this is kind of a failed process, you mentioned HCD looking at housing fees coming up pretty soon. What has been the organization of that process, and what representation have municipalities had throughout that, given that they're presenting findings, making findings that would think that this is, should be a non-biased and as full as possible, look at the situation and the concerns? And I worry this is another thing that would be perhaps missing that crucial input, and just will continue to be more of a failed process that we've kind of seen from HCD in the state.
When, when I was preparing the staff report and I was reviewing the legislation, this is AB 879, mentioned in the staff report, that's where I first actually saw the mention to that deadline for HCD. I didn't, I wasn't even aware that they were doing that. So I don't.
There's, there's the answer right there. This is probably a problem, when it's something that completely changes the character or how all cities work, and you're not even in the discussion as to how you might actually help make that work. Could have been a better outcome, maybe. You think after SB 50, there might have been some lessons learned?
Yeah, I don't know if they're just creating this report to drop it on the state legislature and then let them decide what to do with it. I would guess that's maybe what's happening, but I haven't heard anything about that.
Well, at any rate, I appreciate the report, I appreciate the data in here. It shows, obviously, despite the situation such as it is, our numbers are not a bad place, given all those things, and at the same time, people are still happy with the quality of community. So it sounds like we've kind of at least followed the right path on this, but I am concerned about what the future holds with some of the legislation.
All right. Thank you for that. Vice Mayor Skilman?
And I just had a quick clarification on packet page 39, when you were talking about the entitled projects. The Santero station has planned five very low, three low, and six moderate, which would be 14, not seven affordable housing. Okay, so I just wanted to make sure I was.
Yes, you're right. Your math is correct. Sorry about that, as a typo.
No, no, that's okay. I just wanted to make sure, so we have 21 more affordable housing that's in the works. So just wanted to make sure that that number was clear. Okay, thanks.
All right. And Councilmember Moore, questions?
We were talking about the Jamie Lane, Ryan Lane project, and of that particular project, what are we looking at for the very low on that?
So that Jamie Lane is proposed as five affordable units, and I don't think we've come, we haven't come up with a final mix yet. I know, I know that Sonoma Housing Land Trust was hoping to have at least one or two of them at very low, but it is still unsure yet. As was mentioned earlier, the very low is the, you know, when you, as you get deeper into affordability, it's just more subsidy you have to apply to the project, more funding that you have to find to build that and sell it and break even.
So with the Sonoma Land Trust and the housing, inclusionary housing fees, would that be something that they could consider there, or would they be precluded from all very low?
No, they wouldn't be precluded by, they wouldn't be precluded from producing very low, it's really just a financial thing, how much fundraising they're able to do to get down to that number and still make, still make, break even.
That would be something I would think that we would want to consider on there. And then we only have a little over three and a half years to fulfill these requirements?
Yeah, we're about halfway. Yeah, a little bit more than that, but slightly more than that.
And, and the consequences?
You know, I, I don't know that there's any specific consequences, but if you, I'm not aware of any, but if you clearly are blocking housing projects, then it's clear that the state would take action.
Intentional.
Yeah. Yeah, intentionally blocking housing projects.
Thank you. That was my question.
You know, a couple of weeks ago, there was a letter to the editor, the Press Democrat, about how Petaluma falls short on housing targets. So I saved that because I wanted to kind of compare where at least two cities in the county were sitting. So without Kessin and Santero, and clearly those haven't occurred yet, our very low and low, we're at about 32% of our RENA allocation that we've produced. Not great, that would be an F to get that, but it's progress. With Kessin and Santero, if those numbers hold, it brings us up to 55% with still three years to go. Not a great situation, but significantly better, and there's progress, and hopefully progress counts, you know, for something like this. So Petaluma has, you know, we were talking about where did these silly numbers come from? Wait till you get to a big city like Petaluma. So for low and very low, they are required to have 302 units, and they have built 27. That's 9%. 9% is pretty small, smaller than our 32. I don't know where any other cities are, because I haven't, I was looking for some other reports, I couldn't really find any. Interestingly enough, the, the editorial board talked about, well, you know, maybe if the state hadn't taken away the redevelopment funds, you know, cities could have made some progress, but again, you will have some bad players in there. And it's that same kid who was chewing gum in the fourth grade that made us all stay after school. He's still around, I'm telling you. And so how do you fight a problem like that? You know, that's why I said, if there was some kind of a two-year funding cycle from the state to the jurisdictions, and you were sort of, you know, you, you're reaching a goal, and okay, then you're rewarded, and so you get a piece of pie, and maybe you've got another development that can come in. So it's just, it's, it's, it's something that's unfortunately probably never going to come back, which is the sad part. to come back, which is the sad part of it, but, you know, hopefully, we can keep these numbers with Kessin and Santero and at least be moving forward. That's kind of what we're looking at right now. And Cattati is not unlimited in land to just build subdivisions wherever we, you know, freely want to do that. We don't have that kind of land around here, so, yes.
Well, and the other point that I think that we have done a very good job at and other cities haven't so much, and that's that we ensure that those are included. A lot of cities are happy to just take that money, and the money sits over there, and we'd rather have the units built. So we want those houses included, and I, and that doesn't happen in all jurisdictions. We are really unique in that we push that because, I forget where I was at, some, I don't know, some legislative meeting, and a lot of cities don't do that. They just, you know, take that, that in lieu, but then the money sits there, and they never have enough money to build it. So it's sort of like, and the developers are happy to do that because it gets them off the hook. They've paid their fee, they didn't have to build it, they didn't have to, you know, figure out how it was going to pencil out for them. So I, I think that it's really important that we keep pushing to have that built with the projects that we do. I think that that's a good policy, and it's a way of, yeah, pecking away at them, it's not what we'd like, but, you know, we're never going to have the money to, to build these things, you know, on our, we can't build, you know, an apartment complex, you know, on our own to, to make these numbers up. We just will never have those kind of funds.
Any other questions or comments for staff on this? And I'm going to go ahead and open it up for public hearing. Ms. Alderman?
My regulation of reading this report was that we're not going to, we, we're, we're not going to, ever going to meet those goals within the three years because we are out of billable land in Cattati. You will never, you're not going to have maybe one more. So why are we having this long conversation about this when we don't have any land? It's all spoken for. And it, the thing that needs to be attention is just general affordable housing, our rents. I read something, Cattati is $3,200 a month, average year rent? Yeah, it was in one of the city things, and Sonoma County was 2,800. I couldn't afford to live here if my parents did buy the house 50 years ago at $17,000, and it's now worth 700,000. But, you know, they're, we need to work on other things than this, government things with the allocations and all that. We need to work on finding affordable housing way, in different ways and see what we can do. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, seeing no one else for public comment, I'll go ahead and close that. And there is no motion or action for this item here, it's just a receive and file. So thank you for that. Keep our eyes peeled. All right, our last agenda item on the regular agenda is resolution of intent to improve the preliminary engineers' report for the landscape and lighting assessment district, levy and collect annual assessments, and set the time and date of the public hearing for the Cattati landscaping and lighting assessment district for fiscal year 2019, 2020. Mr. Scott?
I think the presentation was all in the title, right?
It was pretty long, wasn't it?
Mayor members of the council, Craig Scott, Public Works Director, City Engineer. This is an annual process. We have 10 landscaping and lighting assessment districts that have been formed over 19, from 1989 to 2003, so some are 15 to 30 years old. And as per the Lighting and Landscape Act of 1972, it's not, the, the assessment is not automatic every year. We have to go through certain specific proceedings to actually go ahead and put those assessments on the tax rules of those homes within those specific assessment districts. This is the, there's three trips to council every year. The first one was back in February where you directed the staff, specifically me, to prepare the draft engineers' report. And then this, this meeting, we go ahead and consider accepting the draft report, having a resolution of intent to levy the assessments, and then to go ahead and set up the public hearing, which we're recommending on, on June 25th. And in between that time, we'll, we do the noticing, there'll be two ads in the paper, two notices in the paper a week apart, and then we would hold the public hearing, at which time we would go ahead to have a resolution imposing those assessments. So we can go skip to the next one there. These are the 10 zones, and the following slide is, is the location of where they are. The resolution's not great on that, but it just gives a general idea that they're pretty scattered around the city. So there is routine maintenance. Most of the zones have lighting and landscaping, but some have just lighting. The landscaping is maintained by a contract landscape company, and anytime there has to be capital improvements or replacing plants or doing repairs to irrigation, that's when the city crews, to be most cost-effective, would come in there and make those repairs. So because some of them are 30 years old and with no adjustment to, for inflation, it's a 30-year-old fee that we're trying to apply to 2019 costs. So we're, we're behind, there's just no way we can do, do an exceptional job there on those zones. Okay, so instead of saying, hey, these are the 10 zones, and this is what we do specifically in each zone, because I, we're kind of repeating ourselves every year, have identified, hey, okay, this is the non-routine maintenance activities for this past year, 1819, and then a little bit of 2019, look ahead, and then 1920. So Zone 2, Quail Hollow, that's the one along Myrtle with Agiri. There is a large redwood that's pushing up the sidewalk, and so we did here hold a public meeting, a community meeting on the 21st, and got some members of the public to come in and talked about, hey, we really love this tree, assess the character, its character in Cattati, or the large trees, and so is there a way staff can look into options of keeping the tree and repairing the sidewalk? So they're very responsive to that, and so this upcoming year, we're going to look at options, fixing the sidewalk and keeping that tree. Zone 3, Summers, so the, this is their driveway entrance on La Salle. It's not a pri, a public street, it's a private driveway that goes into their subdivision as part of the 1819 Street Improvement Project. Those ramps got improved, and so they did have sufficient reserves to pay for that. And so you'll see that in the budget numbers. Zone 6, Oak Knoll, there was an oak tree in the island there that split, and it was not a safe situation, so public crews, public work crews went up there and cut that tree down on Christiansen Fort. Park Meadows, we had the lighting and landscape, or the, the lighting project that, that had different lights, decorative lighting in La Paz, and part of it was in McKinnis Circle, which is where the Park Meadows Zone 8 is, and there are five lights installed within the boundaries of that zone, and those are, amount of those, that landscape district reserves. And they did have sufficient budget for that. Zone 9, Centero Way, so we have been in, I attended several HOA meetings because we're looking to directly contract with the landscape service provider there instead of the HOA, contracting with them and invoicing the city. And so that has been agreed to, and there is also some park capital improvements, replacing benches, the, that are, that we're considering. And so it's always important here to have that discussion first before actually doing it, rather than the other way around, so everyone can do, prioritize what we want to spend that reserve money on. And so there's the playground structure, some trees are susceptible to disease, and so looking at placing those out. The irrigation system is getting gnarled up by the roots and needs to be replaced, and so there is a discussion with the group on which ones to do priority. So those are the, the sort of non-routine maintenance ones. Everything else is just kind of boring to talk about because it's routine maintenance. All right, so the next series of slides are tables, tables of numbers. So these are the proposed assessments. It's what we like to do, or it's important, rather, it's relevant, is for the zones 7, 8, 9, and 10, that we do have an inflation adjustment, the allowable maximum is something we keep track of each year, even though we're not there at the maximum, just because, hey, we can assess anything up to that maximum without having a protest vote. So that is, at the inception of those zones to today, we take the San Francisco Construction Cost Index number, take the ratio of that, multiply by that initial assessment, and that's how we get the maximum. And you can see with those zones here, 7, 8, and 9, and 10, it's not up to the maximum because there are some years that the city did not impose that annually increase due to inflation. The other ones are, are static based on the, the assessment when the zones were initiated, again, back, back 30 years ago in some cases. The next table shows the number of properties in each zone, just to give you an idea of what the range is, and it's a summary of the reserves, and so the reserve balance at the beginning of 1819, and then at the end, and you can see with Quail Hollow, for example, it's not in good shape, and they're actually getting in a hole with general loan, general loans, general fund loans, rather, sorry, and others are, have healthier reserve balances. So it's, it's one of the main, you know, efforts in, annually, is to keep track of those reserves and make sure that we're spending the money in a prudent way. With Quail Hollow, the, the effort there was with the landscape replant, replacements and the mulching that happened along Myrtle, and what, where we had zero water use before, we now have a water bill of about $900 a year, and so that then dropped to about $700 a year from one year to the next. As the plants get more and more established, we hope that number to continue to drop, and so that, that zone becomes solvent again. Let's see, and then the next slide is just to give, give us all an idea of, in total, what the 10 zones that we do collect, with $48,000. We can't move, use this money, mix them between the zones, each, all the revenues in each zone have to stay within that respective zone. And just because I talked about general fund loans, these are the, the loan amounts for the two zones, Quail Hollow and Summers. Summers went ahead and paid theirs off after that first year, it was just kind of a cash flow issue, but they did have sufficient revenue to pay up that $207, and Quail Hollow, again, had, they, they have, are needing general fund loans every year. It's shrinking amount, but I've, we've just got an estimate of over 10 years before that. It's easily going to get back. All right, so that brings us to the resolution, the recommendation, which is to adopt the resolution for those items up there, and intent to levy and collect. Figure everybody on notice that we have the intent to do this, and then approving the allow, allowance, keeping track of that maximum assessment, and then, of course, setting the public hearing for June 25th, in which case we'll, we'll have a, staff will have a presentation, and we'll open it up for public comment, a public hearing, and then go ahead and take action on the resolution. That's it for the presentation. If you have any questions, you can ask.
All right, thank you very much, appreciate that. Any questions from council? Councilmember Harvey?
On page 69, on Quail Hollow, it says, just above the little table that's down there, it says estimated annual cost of maintaining landscaping and lighting for fiscal year 1920 is $1,240. Shouldn't that be 2,035, 43? All the rest of the tables seem to track that way, but this one doesn't?
That's, that's an excellent point. I think we, we tend to write this in a formulaic approach, to mash the revenues coming in, but over the last two or three years, we've actually allowed some to take a general fund loan, so that would be, that is a correction.
Okay.
Go ahead and make that.
So it is, okay. And along the same lines, I know you just talked about the loan, and that it looks like over 10 years, and that you thought that utility charges were going to start going down. I mean, I'm thinking that it, it's never going to catch up. Point, in fact, is that you've got a thing on here that there's a problem with the sidewalks and the redwood tree, and that's going to add, who knows how many thousands of dollars to what needs to be done to correct that. And I don't know how many other things can go wrong, but this one in particular seems like it's, you know, we could, I'll be dead probably before it ever catches up. I mean, I don't see it trending in a way that, that's ever going to make it be self-sufficient. And what are our, what can, if anything, can we do, or are we just stuck having, you know, to use monies from the general fund to pay for this when we could be doing something else with it? It, it just doesn't...
Well, theoretically, we could put it up to a vote of those members within that landscape and lighting district, but that has a very poor chance of passing because these, these are always initiated when there's one owner, the developer.
Right.
Right? And so that's very unlikely. I think what the likely thing is, is to have the general fund loans kind of go on.
Well, it's interesting that you met with them, and they are telling us what they would like us to do, but no funds to help pay for that. I mean, it just seems, so I'm, I'm just going to throw this out there, let's just say the solution that they want, you know, we're going to have to get an arborist in, and we're going to have to do this, and we're going to have to have, you know, special care of the tree, because if you cut on the, you know, we could be talking, you know, some very specialized care, and that doesn't seem quite fair to put that upon us and not wanting to help contribute to fund that in some manner. I mean, we have to be prudent with the funds, and, and, and it may be most cost-effective to eliminate it. I, I don't know that, you know, because you have to do what you have to do to come back with that, but to have to continue ramping that up and having to spend extra money every year to save this, I, I don't know that that's the most cost-effective way. So I'm, I'm just concerned that this one is going in the wrong direction, and I don't see... So I'm just concerned that this one is going in the wrong direction, and I don't see it ever coming back into a proper direction.
No, it's a good point. Councilmember Warren, questions for staff?
No, I have some comments, but not for staff, correct?
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Lammon.
Yeah. Let's turn the microphone on first. That's going to help a lot. Yeah, a question for staff. At first, I will say, you know, I agree with my colleagues, the fact we're in a position, whoever put us in a position that these don't have some small cost of living increase built in to keep the values, so they can protect this neighborhood, properties for these neighborhoods, well, they should be, I mightily chagrined about that. Let's just put it that way, and I won't say what I'm really thinking. But with that, you know, I do think we need to look at the big picture. If you look at the funding compared to most of what we're doing, we're not talking huge amounts of funding, and it's relatively small. And when you look at the benefit it brings to look, the feel, and the value, for example, just what we invested in going down that street, that's a big thing. That brings a lot of value to the whole community, which is, you know, really kind of the reason we're here. That's what's expected. So at any rate, what I did want to ask, so now that you've explained to us how you're kind of completely have your hands tied on one through six and have no revenue coming in whatsoever, I want to ask you for more on a couple of them. So I recognize the difficulty, but here's what I wanted to point out. This is a discussion the city manager and I have had a few times over the year, and it came about in one area, in Christensen Court in Zone Six. There's a very small median area there with just some very small shrub plantings, and a lot of it died out. And as pointed out, the neighbors didn't mind paying the ongoing fee, but they would like to see more than 30% of the median have vegetation. So we replaced it, checked the lines, everything was good, and within a year, it was back to half of it being dead. So we fixed it again. And, you know, it's about back to the same condition. So this tells me, I think we have, we're missing something in the process. There's an iteration where our people we contract with to go out and do the weeding and the maintenance are supposed to, as I understand it, at least notify us when something needs to be replanted, when something's died back. Something's getting dropped there, and I wonder if we could just take a look at it, finding a way to tighten that up a little. It's not probably a huge, extra expensive money, but I think it would put us in a better situation. Because when I see things like this, I know that if staff saw this, something would be done about it, but seeing it recur tells me that, okay, we have a good process, things are getting done, but it looks like we'd be tightened up here. So I know you're working with nothing, but if you could at least look as you work with nothing to try and fold that in, I would be appreciative.
Thank you very much. Vice Mayor Skelman?
No questions. Thank you.
All right. And I don't, at this point, I don't have any questions either, so I'm going to go ahead and open this up for public comment. Seeing Noddy going the opposite direction, I'm going to close the public comment. Bringing it back to council, are there, you said you had some comments, Councilmember Warren?
I did. I can understand the concern with Quail Hollow and the fees, but if you look at when these were initiated, and then there was no cost of living component built in there, and primarily the developers set these up initially as the primary property owner there, the residents of Quail Hollow are probably under the direction that they're already paying property taxes in addition to any streeting and lighting assessment. So I don't know that they're going to have an inclination to want to vote for anything additional, as Mr. Scott had indicated. But I can kind of see in their point of view, it's like, hey, we already do pay some property taxes, and then we pay these additional taxes. So we do think that we are contributing what would be inappropriate enough. Just to play the double advocate on that.
I don't think he's, he's not looking for a response.
No, no.
He's making his point. Did you have any more comments?
Yeah, I just want us to be cognizant of the fact that at $700 a year, or almost $800 a year, over 10 more years, I understand that's going to go down, but it's probably not going to go down to nothing. We are going to continue to subsidize this, and is that the most appropriate use of those funds as that number grows? Because they already owe us, what was it that they say? They were already in to us for a few thousand dollars. That's going to grow, you know, another, possibly up to $10,000 over the next 10 years. And then depending upon what happens with what's going on with this tree, it could be even more. So I'm just questioning whether that value is there for us to continue to subsidize this. I don't even know that they know that we're subsidizing it to that degree, you know. You think they know that?
I think some do. A few do. I don't know how much it's gotten dispersed through the neighborhood. Truthfully, do the greater majority know that? Probably not.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, because it does, it does mean that there's other things that we can't do, you know. It does mean that, you know, general fund money can be used for road paving and other things. It means that we can't do other things. And that's really all I'm saying, is that that's fine, that people think that we should be doing this, but when you take away from one thing, it means you can't do something else. And I think that that has to be balanced in weight, and that's really all I'm suggesting. Because I think that if you look at all the rest of these other districts, nobody's paying just $40. I think that that one somehow got really slighted, if you will, for what it is that's going on.
One more bite at the apple?
Please.
Hopefully a short one? Yeah, I'm just going to say, you know, obviously, we would have never set this up this way. And as I said, whoever did should be taken out on horsewhip. That's what I was thinking. I wanted to say it, but it's 10 minutes later, so I'll say it now. But nevertheless, this is what we have. I mean, this is what we're stuck with. So with that, granted, I hear your concern, but looking at the amount of money, what is the other choice? The only other option is to essentially, well, we're going to let that huge chunk of the downtown, essentially the entrance to a full third quarter at least of our community going down Myrtle, essentially become rundown, weedy-looking bad. That's not an ideal thing. If we look at the big picture, maintaining the community for the people who live in it, it's not a bad investment. I mean, it's not an ideal situation, and I agree with you. I had never set it up this way, and I know you wouldn't have. But with that, I mean, the only other way to change it would be, and this is my thought, maintain it nicely, keep it looking decent, and someday when the neighborhood recognizes that and perhaps wants something bigger, better, grander in years to come, then it's the honest talk about if you want more, we need to turn this into a rolling cost, because we'd be happy to give you more and do more. But we can't make other people in other parts of the community continue to pay for that in the long term. And that's the only way you're going to get it, probably, is I think it's going to be that carrot, because it says we have no stick in this case. And I think the only stick is just leaving nothing done, and that doesn't strike me as a good direction at all, you know?
I'm not suggesting we do nothing. I just want people to be cognizant of the fact that this number is growing, not shrinking, and I don't see it balancing out, you know, for another probably 20 years or so, and that's only if the landscaping fails and we don't have to.
Well, like you said, what else could go wrong? And I was laughing to myself, thinking, probably just about everything.
Yeah.
This is why costs are designed to be rolling when they're long-term, because the real world, everything else increases.
And the reality is, there's not been a decision made on this tree yet. Is that correct? So, you know, what's the cost of removing it? What's the cost of not removing it and working the sidewalk around it or something? Because, I mean, it's displaced, you know, six, eight inches. I've tripped on it numerous times, and I know it's there. That's the sad part. So I think once those costs come in, staff can have a conversation with maybe some of the homeowners over there and say, you know, here are the options. We need to take this to the city council for some kind of a decision. You're welcome to chime in and come to that public meeting, and that decision is ours. So I think you made a great point, but I don't think we're at the actual decision point yet. But we'll be there soon enough, sure. And then we'll have to make a decision. Somebody will. Okay. Any further comments on this topic? Then I would entertain a motion.
And I will look to our soon-to-be departing city attorney and say, can this be done as all one motion if I incorporate all of the language? Okay, thank you. So I would move to adopt a resolution of intent to levy and collect annual assessments for Zones 1 through 10, approve the proposed inflation adjustment as outlined in the preliminary engineer's report for Zones 7, 8, 9, and 10, and also to set June 25th, 2019, at 7:00 PM for a public hearing for the City of Catati Landscaping and Lighting Assessment District for fiscal year 2019, 2020.
That is a motion. Typically, what follows would be a second.
A second.
Thank you very much. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Please show a 5-0 vote to move that forward. And thank you all very much.
And just want to thank you for combining those into one instead of 10 different ones.
Yes, much appreciated. I was only going to call.
It's much appreciated and much threatened. We appreciate accepting that threat. It's lovely. All right. Item 12 is the city manager's report.
Thank you, mayor, members of the council. So there was a streetlight, a decorative streetlight that was money in its own business in front of Walgreens that got ran over by a car. And fortunately, this policy goes back several years now, but Public Works keeps spare lights on standby because these lights, you wouldn't think so, but they.
From the cars?
Yeah, they, people like to hit poles. I don't know what the deal is. Even if they're up on sidewalks, they'll chase them up onto the sidewalk and hit them there, too. But anyway, we, these streetlights take about 12 weeks to order. So, you know, many years ago, we'd have lights get knocked down, and it would be, you know, months, three, four months, and people, neighbors would be like, what the, what the heck's going on? Can't you guys just put a new pole up? I was like, well, it's not quite that easy. You got to order it, and then it takes, you know, like a whole quarter of the year to get it in, and then you got to put it up. So anyway, it's a, this particular light was run over, and it was replaced within two weeks, and then the new light, spare light, was then ordered. So just a small example of a much better way to operate than waiting for things to get destroyed and then ordering them. As was brought up tonight, the GSA, the Groundwater Sustainability Agency Board, is to vote on the well pumping fee at their June 13th meeting. There's also going to be a second reading of the ordinance that regulates well users within the county. This is the well registration ordinance, as well as the one that allows the GSA to impose a fee. The fee itself is something that would be, it's a separate action that they would be taking at the June 13th meeting. And like we mentioned, we'll be talking about this at the council meeting on June 11th. And the city pumping fee is estimated to be in the $5,000 to $10,000 range. I think the estimate was like five and change this coming year. Well 1A, just so you know, we have three municipal wells. One of them is Well 1A, and it's just, it's down for repairs right now, and we're working to get this back online before the summer, so you know. And Catati was also one of the three cities in California to be awarded the Sunshine Award by Transparency California for exceptional service and public transparency. And this is, it's a team effort between admin services and city clerks, so good job, everybody. And finally, just on the general stuff, Civic Center, we had a Civic Center Park workshop a couple of weeks ago here at City Hall, and it was good. This is a prelude to finishing up both the Park Master Plan, but also the Prop 69 grant that this park is eligible for. So hopefully, that will be successful, but we'll be applying for that later in this year. And the Park Master Plan, I almost feel bad saying this, but it will be coming soon. I swear to God, it'll come soon. We've been having consultant trouble, but we're beating them, and they seem to be getting close to getting it back to us, so very soon. And then finally, on the recreation front, next week, we're starting summer camps with Spanish Camp and Sleeping Beauty Musical Theater Camp for children. Other summer camps begin June 10th and go through the summer, including the Camp Catati Traditional Day Camp, counselor and training program for teens, tennis camp for all ages, of course, theater camp, farm camp, gymnastics camp, Lego camps, and much more. And then beginning Monday, June 3rd, we're also starting the free lunch program for children under 18 every weekday in La Plaza Park. This replaces the hot lunches that kids have at school, but when school's out, they don't have access to that. So this is a partnership with Redwood Empire Food Bank. No paperwork's required, just show up for a complete meal beginning at noon at La Plaza Park. The farmers' market season begins June 6th this year, and will continue on Thursday nights throughout the summer from 4:30 to 7:30 PM each week in La Plaza Park. And the organizers are working hard this year to get new and additional produce, hot food, and goods vendors, and each week we'll have live music. So check the Facebook page, check their Facebook page as well, and you can see what's coming up. And our first summer movie in the park this year will take place the day after on Friday, June 7th at dusk. We're showing The Goonies. So it's the retro movie, the throwback, and this one is crazy popular. So if you want to come to see Goonies, you better get there early, because it's going to be crazy. Hopefully, there's enough lawn space in the park to hold everyone. Prior to the movie, we're hosting a scavenger hunt for children with prizes for the winners, kind of in the Goonies theme. And then on Saturday, June 15th, the Catati Chamber of Commerce is hosting their second annual Catati Music Festival in La Plaza Park from noon to 6:00. It's a free event, so be sure to get there if you want to have fun. And the chamber, of course, will be there. There's food, drinks, and all the normal stuff. And then on Wednesday, June 26th, we're partnering with the library to offer a free teen book club in the Copeland Room here at 4:00 PM, where teens can choose a free book to read. And we'll continue to meet on the last Wednesday of each month to discuss and recommend books to other teens. And then finally, for any rec programs or to register or to volunteer for an event, please contact Ashley Wilson at 665-4222, or A Wilson at CatatiCity.org, or of course, go to our website or our Facebook page. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right. Thank you very much. Any questions for city manager? Yes, Mr. Lammon?
I guess this would be a question for the city manager, maybe for our water agency rep, too, groundwater agency rep, too. Forgive me, but it just started when I, you mentioned it, I was thinking, and then you mentioned it again. So the GSA fee, I know there was some concern about how that might play out in the unincorporated area, and the supervisors decided to help fund that for a few years, which is great within their province. But I know some of that funding is coming from the water agency, and I know from the general fund, and I believe some infrastructure areas in the budget, too. And I, my concern, what I want to see clarified, is this doesn't come back to the municipal customers to subsidize at the next rate adjustment. Because obviously, it wouldn't be, I mean, if the county wants to spend their money to do that, I think that's great, but it wouldn't be fair to ask people in Catati or Santa Rosa or other cities to subsidize water for the people in the unincorporated areas of the county. So what safeguards are in place? What promises have been made to make sure we don't wind up in that situation? Because I'd rather bring it up and ask about it now than a year down the road.
Well, I'll take a shot at it, and then anyone can feel free to chime in. So the water agency is planned to contribute $11,000 and change as a pumper, and that's coming out of the transmission system budget, so the budget that we all, as customers, pay into. My understanding is that represents the dollar value for the amount of groundwater they pump from their wells in the Santa Rosa Plain. So they have some wells off Occidental Road, and there's a pumpage fee. And so $11,000 is, my understanding, is what they would be pumping from the plain, so they would be like any other pumper in the groundwater plain, paying for that.
Okay, so that's that piece.
There's an additional $40,000 or so that I believe is coming from their general fund, which wouldn't be coming from transmission system budget that we all pay. That's, is that consistent?
That's my understanding also, but what I found out today when I went to the ad hoc meeting that they had is the exact amounts and exactly where it's coming from and all of that is not final. of that is not final because their budgets aren't final.
Sure.
So we really won't get that level of detail.
I'm guessing, I guess what I'm asking, then, was there some recognition of a fairly legitimate concern to make sure there's not a hidden unintentional double bill, and that that doesn't happen?
I don't know that they specifically gave it that kind of thought process, but as was pointed out, where it's coming from doesn't appear to impact
Okay.
our rates. And the transmission part is they're pumping on our behalf, so they're being assessed a fee, just like we're being assessed a fee for what they're pumping, what they're pumping out, so that rightfully would be part of that budget. So, but what they do with their general fund, I don't know that we really have much to say in that, if that's where the rest of it comes from.
I mean, you can see the concern.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, yeah. No, I see, yeah. But we should get that clarity.
If we could just make sure there's some assertions or promises to make sure that that doesn't intentionally unintentionally...
Doesn't come circle back around.
Mm-hmm, yeah. You know, 40K split out of all of us in the plane may not be a huge amount, but I just don't think that subsidization would be appropriate in that particular sense. If the county wants to do it, my hat's off to them, I think that's great, but it wouldn't be fair to ask our customers to do that.
Yeah, I can say that, you know, Craig and I have spoken, and just about this issue, because I know it's come up at the TAC level, the TAC is not at all interested in us paying for the county's contribution.
That's good to hear. That might have been the first thing I wanted to hear. As long as the TAC's thinking that and saying that very loudly, I'm satisfied for now. Thank you.
All right, any further questions for city manager? Yes, please.
I just wanted to let you know that some folks reached out to me and commented that they appreciated that you had gone out to the different HOAs and different groups and talked about the parks plan, so they felt like they really got some good information and didn't necessarily have to come to a meeting, but they were, they were happy to hear about the information and were appreciative that you had reached out to them and shared that. So, thank you.
All right, very good. Now we will go on to item 13, city council member reports. I'm going to look to my left, make sure his microphone is on so I don't surprise him at this meeting, and say, Councilmember Lammon.
You're getting me trained, Mr. Mayor. All right, one quick one I just wanted to mention, Sonoma Clean Power was recognized a couple of weeks ago by the North Bay Business Magazine in their annual poll as best company to do business with in the region, and I wanted to mention two points which I thought were kind of interesting about that. Number one, that was from the readers, that's the public. And number two, I get a kick out of the fact that this is a government agency being pointed out as being best to do business with, so proves the point that every once in a while even government can get something right, so happy to share that.
All right, thank you very much. Vice Mayor Skilman.
Just one event, I was able to go to the League of California Cities meeting on May 16, along with Councilmember Harvey, and we had Congressman or Senator, Senator Weiner, who came and talked to us about housing, and part of what was brought up there as well was how can they incentivize the cities to create more inclusionary housing? So that was, it was a point well taken that we were glad he was addressing, and hopefully will be incorporated in some future legislation. Then, that we also went on a tour, they showed us how this one company is making modular housing, and it seems to be a big trend now because it definitely cuts down on construction costs, and it was fascinating to walk, they had this entire, this giant structure was actually where they were, had been constructing submarines. So if you're trying to imagine a scale, like triple whatever is in your imagination right now, so it's huge, and so they can actually build everything, have all of their materials delivered there, and then have the end product taken out on the other end of this giant hangar, if you will, and then they store them on the property out on Mare Island. So there were all these white plastic, I don't know if you call them sealed or, you know, units that were a whole apartment right there. And then they had, anyway, it was really interesting to be able to walk through and actually see, there's the floor being built, here's the plumbing and electrical being put in, here's, and then just seeing it bit by bit, and then getting to the end product by the time you looked around to the end of the tour. And it was just amazing because then they can build 100 apartments, store them on their property, and then bring them tenant a time and build first floor, second floor, third floor. You're not worried, you're not fighting with the weather, I mean, it's just, it was really interesting, and it's very similar to what's proposed to happen with the hotel, so it was really interesting to kind of see it hands-on. Anyway, so I was glad that I had a week off between jobs and was able to go to an afternoon meeting for once. So, anyway, that's all I have to report on.
Looking forward to retirement, are you? All right, Councilmember Harvey.
Well, I have a few reports. I attended the Civic Center community meeting. Started out pretty slow, there was just a couple of us, but by the time it was over, there was a few more people, I think, want to say about seven people there when it finally ended. Really good input, people gave good input on that, drawing on the maps and stuff, so thank you for you and Ashley doing that, that was wonderful. I attended the Waste Management Agency meeting, and I can finally say that we now have an executive director, Leslie Lukash was named the executive director. She's very, very involved in the county with a lot of zero waste things. She works on the zero waste events, and she knows a lot about trash and things, so it's a really good addition. So she will actually start June 4, I believe is when she starts, but finally able to get that whole brouhaha done. We had some issues around employment there, so we got all that squared away, but that was time-consuming. As Wendy said, we attended the North Bay Division meeting. For, for Mr. Weiner, he was very late coming because that happened to be the morning that his bill basically got put on hold, so we kept having to move things around because we were waiting for him to get there, so it was wonderful that he came and spoke to us even though his bill had just been, you know, put on the shelf. And, yeah, the Factory OS place was really pretty amazing. I mean, it's pretty incredible that you can see people like on the floor, and there are people, workers working from underneath and workers working above, and then they just move this thing along, but it expedites it. They have multiple shifts, and we went, the real reason we got to actually go through and see all the sections was they stopped everything in between shift change, so we actually could walk all of that. But what's so interesting is, is twofold. One, the things are all furnished and everything, I mean, everything is in them when they, when they wrap them, which is pretty interesting, all the furniture and everything is in there. And they learned pretty early on to take all of the infrastructure wiring and all that stuff, and it has an area right outside of it that all that comes out to, so that when the units are shipped, they don't have workers going inside hooking everything up. They have a little area, and they kind of hook them in there. But as Wendy said, there's hundreds of them out there. One of the projects that they're working on right now is that complex in Emeryville that burnt down a couple of times, that's actually what they're working on, and they'll be able to expedite that, but there's hundreds of them stacked out there. And then the last part of the day was, we went to Savage &amp; Cook, which is a distillery, but one of the oldest buildings on Mare Island, they converted in there, and just to see, there was a lot of lead paint and stuff in there, so they like had to strip all of that out, but the beauty of the bricks and wood and how that was preserved was really, really pretty incredible, what they found in there. And even in one of the sections, I guess, they accidentally uncovered their, they used to capture water because of the saltwater intrusion, they captured rainwater, and they found one of the sisterings right underneath there, and so they kind of made a feature in there of that. But they really, they showed that to us because they're really trying to redo that whole area, and just the different kinds of things that they can do with that was pretty incredible. On May 22, I went to the Changing Climate and How It Can Affect Our Groundwater. They had a bunch of scientists there, and they did a lot of modeling, and they went through all the modeling, and then they spoke about how it might impact us and some of the trajectory, some of it was way above my, my level when the scientists get there and start talking about all of that, but it was really interesting to kind of just scratch the surface on that, on that knowledge, to see what things could, could happen to us and how the different impacts that we might see with our groundwater in the future. And then, as I said earlier, I attended the Sigma ad hoc meeting today, and so more to come, we'll talk about that more on 11. And that's all I have.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Moore?
Nothing, nothing.
All right, just a couple of quick items on my end. I did attend the monthly Ag and Open Space meeting, and we did finalize a letter back to the Mayors and Councilmembers Association regarding the matching grant program and the recusal idea that's been discussed, and it was a unanimous vote, and Mayor Hinton from Sebastopol was there as well. I think she fully understands now that this was not this recusal process from being a, a member of the matching grant program, which is in every other year's cycle, did not just apply to electeds. There's only three electeds that are even on Ag and Open Space, but it applies to everybody. So if somebody is working for a nonprofit or working for a city, and they happen to have a proposal that is submitted in that particular cycle, you cannot be on that subcommittee and vote on it. I mean, it's, you're trying to be as transparent and clear as you can, but she seemed to have this focus that I kept explaining for six or eight months, that it was just for electeds, but clearly it wasn't so. So I signed that letter before I left that office that night, and it's gone off to Mayor Harrington of Sonoma as the Chair of Mayor and Councilmembers, and hopefully that will rest. And, do I need to say that? Do I need to say that? The only thing I want to say that came out of the general manager's report is that we've had two youth members on Ag and Open Space Advisory Committee for a number of years. Both are gone now. One has aged out, and he's actually been appointed by Supervisor Rabbit for one of the district two appointees, which is great, and he now also works for Sonoma Land Trust. And then there was a young woman who was a senior who's going to be going away to college. So, so we are actively recruiting for a youth, two youth member positions for Ag and Open Space. Do not ask me what the age numbers are that you need to be because I don't know and I don't remember, but probably somewhere 15 to 20, that's a good guess for now, but you can contact Ag and Open Space. Yeah, if you want more information, send me an email, I'll get it to you, I promise. And the last one I wanted to talk, was a couple of things. So I went to Farmster a couple of Fridays ago, actually rode our bikes over, and Dustin gave a great presentation. There was probably 25 people there, half of them were kids, and a couple of them were regulars, because he knew them by name, they knew him, they knew all the pigs' names and so on and so forth. But it was just, it was great to get an overview for the rest of us just walking through the area there and seeing what they're doing over there with the new fence that's up. I mean, it's looking really great, so I'm looking forward to a soon presentation by him, giving the council and the public an update. And there was something I was also tasked with just to update you guys from the last Mayors and Councilmembers Association meeting in Petaluma, that there was a, an ad hoc of myself, Mayor Harrington, and Mayor Belforte from Ronard Park to put together a letter kind of à la the whole CASA concept, but first of all, we moved past CASA because it's a done deal. It's gone, it is what it is, and we have these bills like SB 50 that are now in the hopper. So I started to draft now my second letter on this topic and share it with them, and the day that I was sending that off was the day that it was...
So you killed the bill.
I killed the bill, yeah. They didn't want, they didn't want any more letters from me, so it worked, but it's a two-year bill.
I think we found who should be on those A-bag positions. Thank you for volunteering, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, right, right. So, so I talked to both mayors and just said, can we just, you know, take a backseat on this one for now, we've got time? And they said yes. So in case you don't see a letter coming out the next packet, you'll know why. All right, that was it for me, and item 14 is public comment on non-action agenda items. Ms. Alderman.
This is comment on future agenda items. For one thing, I would like a social media code of conduct over Mark Lammon's next door doing city business. That be, it's in the code of conduct, but it's vague, it doesn't cover social media, so I'd like that to be updated. I would still like an ethics charge and a public apology from John Moore for his behavior over many months. Stop it. That's just another example of the shaming and the actions he does. I would also like the, sorry, I have to gather myself. After that, can I come back after?
Sure.
I got you.
Sure, sure, sure. Mr. Beric.
I'd like to speak on the presentation tonight on Ms. Donahue. If any of you have been in a court of law and seen two attorneys go at it with the same amount of facts, arguing different points of view on a law, and see them come up with two completely different situations, then you'll know that you are not always going to get the sound legal advice from one attorney 100% of the time over the years. It's just not going to happen statistically, okay? You've got to go to court to see it, to believe it, that if you rely on a city attorney to give you good legal advice all the time, then you're very naive. Our city attorney has never been the last word on the law, so any council members who take her advice as gospel is ridiculous and irresponsible. The Nave Office, Law Office, has been notorious for giving out bad legal advice, because I've talked to other city council members in other cities who have told me horror stories about that office. No necessarily reflection on Robin here, but just saying. And you suffered a federal lawsuit that I filed against you violating my civil rights where a federal judge said that the City of Cattati needs to be re-schooled on the First Amendment. And what she was basically, he was basically saying was addressing that to the city attorney to come back here and do a little bit of education. Did she do that? I don't know, I don't think so. And regarding Ms. Donahue coming back for some social events and so forth, have we seen any of our past city attorneys come back here for any social events? Has Richard ever come back? I haven't seen him. Mr. Jeffrey Walters, has he ever come back to the city? They don't come back. How about former city councilmen's? Jeff Fox ever come back? Janet Orchard ever come back? Pat Scholardi ever come back? Patty Minnis ever come back? John Gardino ever come back? No, when they're done here, they're done. They say they're coming back, I heard them say, oh, we're coming back, they don't come back. It was nice to see you come back, though, and I told you that you came back, but it was 10 years later, you did come back, Mayor, but only when a paycheck was waving in front of your face. That's when you came back. But anyway, regarding Donahue, any attorney worth her weight in salt would have pulled John Moore aside privately and said, you need to apologize like a man, and get this farce, this circus that you've created, done with. He's insulted a lady, a taxpayer, and his conduct goes on, his irresponsible conduct goes on and on and on, further embarrassing his fellow city councilman on public TV without restraint. It is the largest embarrassment I've ever seen. And if Robin was, was, was a sound attorney, she would have told him that this is irresponsible and unacceptable, but good luck, Robin, going forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Alderman. Are you ready to come back?
I watched the last council meeting, and George Beric asked you all to, if you believed in the code of conduct and... in the code of conduct, and not one of you raised your hands, that spoke volumes. You need to have an item on your behavior under the code of ethics and code of conduct, and they need to be updated. You need to make sure that things like that has been happening, this, for years now, don't happen anymore. I don't want to come to these meetings anymore because I am going to be bullied, shamed, I'm going to be bullied online, I'm going to be, anything I do, he is chilling my, especially Mark Lammon, is chilling my friends, my free speech, so is John Moore. The, I spoke with the attorney that did that, they, he didn't did George's one about the civil rights. They did not, they were going to file an injunction against the city, but for not having respecting, that they'd have to respect civil rights. The attorney said that the judge laughed it off and said, oh, the city's got to learn its lesson. You never learned your lesson. You continue, how many people are here? George and I for the, and you hurt me. I was crying my eyes out because of this man. You didn't care, you don't care about anybody but yourselves and your political careers and financial gain.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on this agenda item, which is Public Comment on Non-Auction Agenda Items? Seeing no one, I will close this public hearing. Yes? Please, brevity.
Quick point of correction and perhaps a question. Can't let you go without one shot at something, got to let you answer something. First of all, in terms of responding during public comment, if somebody demands or questions if we support something, to raise our hand. I want it known, since we have a new reporter might not have seen this in the past, councils don't do that. No, they don't. And to take assumption that it's an interrogatory where you can demand we answer affirmatively is incorrect. So that's number one. But I do have a question actually for the city attorney, which I'd like to ask. I wonder, I've heard it said sometimes that if, you haven't done anything of value for Cattati unless Mr. Beric has gone after you, so in since he went after you tonight, I think that's good. But what I wanted to ask you was this. What I wanted to ask about was, it was brought up that I'm responding inappropriately or we need some sort of process to deal with public media? I want to confirm, ask you if there's any problem with any councilmember responding to community questions or sharing public information on public, yes, on a private website that is not owned by the city. It is not a city or police website. I've had to say this numerous times, my understanding is, other than not commenting on city-owned media, we're free to comment as we like, and most importantly, since the public depends on us and has selected us to represent them, we probably should answer questions if they pose them to us. And I want to hear if that, if my understanding of our current media rules in this city are correct. And I'd like it right into the record because I'm tired of hearing this repeatedly when somebody will not listen.
Yes, that is my interpretation. It's very common for elected officials and appointed officials to write letters to the editor, to give speeches to different organizations, public and private, and to make postings on social media. I know of several other cities where that happens routinely with elected and appointed officials. It's very different from appearing before a subordinate agency and directing or telling the members of that group that this is how a matter needs to be voted on. Providing information in postings and even providing some commentary is not prohibited at all.
Well, thank you for clarifying that. I've tried to put that forward publicly a few times, but perhaps now that you've shared it, maybe the message will get through. I appreciate that. Because I intend to continue to that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
We're going to move on. So we are now at item fifteen, information received after the agenda was posted, and I know we had a couple of letters, and that's all been posted in the agenda. Okay, thank you much. Finally, we're announcement of closed session topics. We have two, and the first is the Public Employee Performance Evaluation, California Government Code, Section 54957, Title: City Manager, and item B, Conference with City Labor Negotiators, Government Code, Section 54957.6, City Designated Representative, City Manager or Designee, and the employee organization is the Cattati Police Management Association. Are there any public comments? Yes, Ms. Alderman. A or B, just let us know when you come up here. Whether it's item A or B, just let us know, please.
It's both.
Okay.
I'd like to point out that you're evaluating both employment status of both Damian and Chief Parish. Damian is the one for seventeen months did not enforce a single building, fire, or any kind of safety code next door that led to power washing into the, into the city storm system and that contaminated our property. He did nothing as a public works director or a city man, later when he turned city manager. When Chief Parish covered up something, he covered up, when that power washing was happening, the water board asked me to keep, we had tested the evidence, the, it was hazmat level contamination, environmental contamination, and my mother called because the police were, I mean, the next-door neighbors were harassing me over it. The Chief Parish, he, I mean, they, they sent out two police officers. The police officers harassed me over the issue, and then the next-door neighbor took them aside for one minute, and then the, the police left. I put this on a CD, DVD, brought it down, it was all on film, brought it down to the station and asked for it to be put into a public record and all that, and later I requested no DVD. No, all along, they told us there was police reports. We were weekly having damage to our property because of the neighbors, or assumed neighbors. But we suddenly became a hotspot of crime in, on the West Side, and there was not a single report. This is pre-Lorin, so I don't blame Lorin, but this has been covered up for years. The environmental damage you did, the harm you did to our family, and how you continue to handle, do things, the police need to be made accountable for what they did. And so Damian needs to be taken in account for his role too. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Beric.
Tonight, you're going to be reviewing Chief Parish as well, and I've met with-
No, we're not. No, we're not.
Okay, is that-
The Police Management Association.
-this Alderman's statement incorrect? He's not being reviewed tonight?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah. It's, it clearly says item A is for the city manager, and item B is the Police Management Association, which the chief is not a part of, just to clarify that. Anyone else on public comment on these two closed session items? Seeing no one, we will close, and we will adjourn to close-